Welcome to our Bible study at the House of Abundance, San Antonio, Texas. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the power that's in your word to give wisdom and direction. We have come tonight to learn more from you as we continue our study of the Acts of the Apostles. Help us to stay focused on your word as we study it. Help us to be diligent in the study of the word and give us wisdom to apply it to our lives. We pray in Jesus' name, amen. Today, we are looking at Acts, chapter 2, verses 1 to 39. Acts 2, 1 to 39, the baptism of the Holy Spirit and the birth of the church. The baptism of the Holy Spirit and the birth of the church. Last time, we had an introduction to the book of the Acts of the Apostles, and went through the first chapter, which was really preparation for what was going to happen in chapter 2, which we are now about to study. Jesus had told his disciples to wait in Jerusalem until they received the Holy Spirit, who would empower them for their mission. They obeyed, and on the day of Pentecost, not only, not only did the Holy Spirit come upon them, but that day also marked the beginning of the early church. I'm going to read verses 1 to 13 of chapter 2. Acts, chapter 2, 1 to 13. When the day of Pentecost had fully come, they were all with one accord in one place. And suddenly there came a sound from heaven as of a rushing mighty wind, and it filled the whole house where they were sitting. Then there appeared to them divided tongues as of fire, and one sat upon each of them. And they were all filled with the Holy Spirit, and began to speak with other tongues as the Spirit gave them utterance. And there were dwelling in Jerusalem Jews, devout men, from every nation under heaven. And when this sound occurred, the multitude came together and were confused, because everyone heard them speak in his own language. Then they were amazed and marveled, saying to one another, "Look, are not all these who speak Galileans? And how is it that we hear each in our own language in which we were born? Patians, and Medes, and Elamites, those dwelling in Mesopotamia, Judea, and Capodocia, Pontus, and Asia, Phrygia, and Camphelia, Egypt, and the parts of Libya adjuring Cyrene, visitors from Rome, both Jews, and proselytes, Cretans, and Arabs? We hear them speaking in our own tongues the wonderful works of God. So they were all amazed and perplexed, saying to one another, "Whatever could this mean?" Others mocking said, "They are full of new wine." Pentecost, which is also called the Festival of Harvest, was held 50 days after Passover, that is, 10 days after Christ's ascension, for Jesus ascended into heaven 40 days after his resurrection. Pentecost was one of the three major annual festivals, all observed by the Jews, the other two being the Passover and the Feast of Tabernacles. Pentecost was also known as the Day of First Fruits. It was a Thanksgiving celebration when the Jews brought to God the first fruits of their harvest, expecting that God would bless the rest of the harvest. Jews from different nations gathered together in Jerusalem. Thus, Peter's sermon, which he gave later in the chapter, beginning from verse 14, was given to an international audience. And as it would happen, this particular Pentecost day was the Day of First Fruit of the Church, that is, the beginning of the Great Harvest of Souls, who would come to know Christ. Verse 2 says, "They were all with one accord in one place." Although we are not told where exactly the 120 believers were, it is not unlikely that they were probably in the upper room where they had the last supper with Jesus. They were waiting, obedient in obedience to the command of Jesus, and they were of the same mind. And suddenly, there was a sound from heaven, like the roaring of a mighty rushing wind, and it filled the house. God made this his presence known, he made his presence known to this group of believers in a spectacular way. A loud sound like that was needed to attract the multitude around to the small group of believers. Then what looked like tongues of fire appeared and settled on each of them. And each of them was filled with the Holy Spirit, and they began to speak in tongues as the Holy Spirit gave them the ability. Fire often indicates the presence of God. In Exodus, chapter 3, God appeared to Moses in a burning bush that was not consumed. God guided the children of Israel by the pillar of fire by night, and he descended before them in the midst of fire on Mount Sinai. Exodus 19, verse 18. Exodus 19, 18. So here we are told, the divided tongues that looked like fire appeared and sat on each one of them. This was all supernatural. That was how the Holy Spirit came upon them. In Matthew, chapter 6, chapter 3, verse 16. Matthew 3, 16. After Jesus had been baptized, the Holy Spirit descended like a dove and settled on him. So these followers of Christ were filled with the Holy Spirit, and they began to speak in other languages. As they spoke, even though they were all Galileans, the Jews from different nations were amazed to hear them in their different languages as they spoke and praised the wonderful works of God. Others in the crowd mocked them, saying, "They're drunk, filled with new wine." They could not find any other explanation for these miraculous acts of God to spread the good news to all the people, no matter their languages. But all that happened, all that's happened here, was that God gave the believers the ability to speak in languages that they had not previously learned in order to reach the different nations gathered there. It should be noted that tongues here refers to understandable languages, as opposed to the gift of tongues listed among the gifts of the Holy Spirit in 1 Corinthians, chapter 12, verse 10. 1 Corinthians 12, verse 10, and which Paul spoke about in 1 Corinthians, chapter 14. 1 Corinthians, chapter 14. Tongues in 1 Corinthians is not understandable except by only those who also have the gift of interpretation of tongues. 1 Corinthians 14, 2. 1 Corinthians 14, 2 says, "For he who speaks in a tongue does not speak to men, but to God; for no one understands him," which is why we often call it our prayer language. However, in the spirit, he speaks mysteries. But that is not the topic today. In verse 13, we read, "Others mocking said, 'They are full of new wine.'" It was at this point that Peter stood up to deliver his sermon. I'm going to read chapter 2, verses 14 to 21 now. Acts, chapter 2, 14 to 21. But Peter, standing up with the elevens, raised his voice and said to them, "Men of Judea, and all who dwell in Jerusalem, let this be known to you, and heed my words; for these are not drunk, as you suppose, since it is only the third hour of the day. But this is what was spoken by the prophet Juel. And it shall come to pass in the last day, says God, that I will pour out my Spirit on all flesh. Your sons and your daughters shall prophesy; your young men shall see visions; your old men shall speak dream-dreams. And on my men servants, and on my maid servants, I will pour out my Spirit in those days, and they shall prophesy. I will show wonders in heaven above, and signs in the earth beneath, blood and fire, and vapor of smoke; the sun shall be turned into darkness, and the moon into blood, before the coming of the great day, and awesome day of the Lord. And it shall come to pass that whoever calls on the name of the Lord shall be saved." Peter's sermon was bold and powerful. It was addressed to the men of Judea and all who dwelt in Jerusalem, especially those who had judged the whole episode as being the effect of new wine. One could notice the difference that the baptism of the Holy Spirit had made in Peter's life. Some weeks before, he had cowardly denied that he knew Jesus, even before a maid. But now, filled with the Holy Spirit and with power, he boldly confronted thousands, many of whom had demanded that Jesus be crucified. He was filled with the Holy Spirit. He has received power to witness, just as Jesus promised them. One could have written off Peter after he denied Jesus. As a matter of fact, he was so disappointed by his failure that he went back to fishing. But Jesus did not write him off, rather, he forgave him and restored him to his position of leadership and commissioned him to feed his flock. John, chapter 21. John, chapter 21. Jesus took away his guilty conscience and shame. And here we have a new Peter, humble but bold. His confidence came from the Holy Spirit, who has made him a powerful speaker. We must never come to a situation where we think that because of our many mistakes and failures, God cannot forgive us and use us for his glory. No matter how bad our mistakes, God is willing to forgive us and make us useful for his kingdom. We must be willing to receive his forgiveness and allow him to use us effectively in our service to him. Now, excuse me, the sermon. Peter started by debunking the idea that the believers were drunk with new wine, saying that it was only nine o'clock in the morning. And he then went on to explain what they saw happening. He went on to quote Juel, chapter 2, verses 28 to 32. Juel 2, 28 to 32. In that passage, God had promised to pour out his Spirit on everyone who followed him, not just on prophets, priests, and kings. Peter said that that was what was happening, and that this was the beginning of the last days. The last days began with Jesus' first coming and would end with a second coming. So we are now in the last days. So what they were seeing here was a part fulfillment of Juel's prophecy. A part fulfillment of Juel's prophecy. Verses 19 to 20, verses 19 to 20 are yet to be fulfilled. That is, the verses that say, "I will show wonders in heaven above, and signs in the earth beneath, blood and fire, and vapor of smoke; the sun shall be turned into darkness, and the moon into blood, before the coming, that is, the second coming, of the great and awesome day of the Lord." Now I'm going to read verses 22 to 39 now of Acts, chapter 2. Excuse me. Acts, chapter 2, beginning from verse 22. Peter's sermon, main sermon. "Men of Israel, hear these words: Jesus of Nazareth, a man attested by God to you by miracles, wonders, and signs, which God did through him in your midst, as you yourselves know. Him being delivered by the determined purpose and thorough knowledge of God, you have taken by lawless hands, have crucified, and put to death, whom God raised up, having lost the pains of death, because it was not possible that he should be held by it. For David says concerning him, "I foresaw the Lord always before my eyes; for he is at my..." Excuse me. "...for he is at my right hand, that I may not be shaken. Therefore my heart rejoiced, and my tongue was glad; moreover, my flesh or soul will rest in hope; for you will not leave my soul in headies, nor will you allow your holy one to see corruption. You have made known to me the ways of life; you will make me full of joy in your presence. Men and brethren, let me speak freely to you of the patriarch David, that he is both dead and buried, and his tomb is with us to this day. Therefore, being a prophet, and knowing that God had sworn with an oath to him that of the fruit of his body, according to the flesh, he will raise up the Christ to sit on his throne. He, foreseeing this, spoke concerning the resurrection of the Christ, that his soul was not left in headies, nor did his flesh see corruption." This Jesus God has raised up, of which we are all witnesses. Therefore, being exalted to the right hand of God, and having received from the Father the promise of the Holy Spirit, he poured out this, which you now see and hear. For David did not ascend into the heavens, but he said himself, "The Lord said to my lord, 'Sit at my right hand, till I make your enemies your foodstool.'" Verse 36. "Therefore, let all the house of Israel know assuredly that God has made this Jesus, whom you crucified, both Lord and Christ. Now when they had heard this, they were cut to their heart, and said to Peter and the rest of the apostles, 'Men and brethren, what shall we do?'" Then Peter said to them, "Repent, and let every one of you be baptized in the name of Jesus Christ for the remission of sins, and you shall receive the gift of the Holy Spirit; for the promise is to you and to your children, and to all who are afar off, as many as the Lord our God will call." The goal of Peter's sermon was to persuade the unbelieving Jews that Jesus was indeed the Messiah. In verses 14 to 21, 14 to 21, which we can label as the introduction to the real sermon, Peter explained the mysterious happenings in Acts 2, 1 to 3, which kept the people bewildered. We have already discussed that, that is, the outpouring of the Holy Spirit. Now Peter goes on to speak about the exalted Christ, that Jesus of Nazareth, whom they delivered to the Romans to be crucified, was indeed the Messiah. God attested to this fact by the miracles, signs, and wonders that he did among them. They were all witnesses of the works that he did. Yet they rejected all the demonstrable evidences that he was the Messiah, even though his ministry life proved that he was. He made them to know that all that happened to Jesus was under God's control. God planned and ordained it. They were just carrying out God's redemptive plans to save mankind. You remember that the people wondered why Jesus allowed himself to be killed. They asked him to save himself if he was truly the Messiah. But he was only carrying out the Father's will. In John 19, verse 10. John 19, verse 10. "When Pilate said to him, 'Do you not know that I have power to crucify you, and power to release? Jesus answered, 'You could have no power on me at all, unless it had been given you from above.'" So Peter continued, "You killed him, but God raised him up. Death could not hold him." In verses 25 to 28, verses 25 to 28, Peter quoted from the Old Testament again David's prophecy concerning Jesus from Psalm 16, verses 8 to 11. Psalm 16, verses 8 to 11. This was to show to them that Jesus resurrected from the dead. His resurrection proved that he was the Messiah. David was not speaking of himself in this psalm, for he did not rise from the dead. But being a prophet, David, looking into the future, was predicting the resurrection of Jesus. God would not leave his body to rot and decay in the grave. Peter continued in verse 33. "Therefore, being exalted to the right hand of God, and being received from the Father, the promise of the Holy Spirit, he poured out this, which you now see and hear." Jesus' ascension to heaven, and is sitting at the right hand of God, a position of highest honor in heaven, is another evidence that Peter used to persuade the unbelieving Jews that Jesus was indeed their Messiah. In verse 34, Peter quotes another Old Testament passage, this time Psalm 110, verse 1. Psalm 110, verse 1. David did not ascend to heaven; neither was he speaking of himself here. The Lord, that is Yahweh, God the Father, said to my Lord, that is Adonai, son of God, Jesus, "Sit at my right hand, till I make your enemies your foodstool." Even in this passage, David confesses Jesus to be his Lord. It will be remembered that when Jesus was on earth, the Jews asked him how David could be calling his descendant "Lord." for Jesus was David's descendant. Jesus pointed out that the people focused only on the human aspect of the Messiah while they completely ignored His divine origin. He was and is the Son of God. He told them that the Messiah was more than someone who was humanly born from the lineage of David. Peter's sermon was powerful. He had made his points. These points were clear and convincing. His conclusion is found in Acts two thirty-six. Acts two thirty-six. "Therefore, let all the house of Israel know assuredly that God has made this Jesus, whom you crucified, both Lord and Christ." Paul indicted them. "You crucified the Messiah, but God raised him up, and now He has made him Lord and Christ." Verse thirty-seven. After Paul's, after Peter's powerful and spirit-filled sermon, the people were deeply moved. The Bible says they were cut to the heart. The Holy Spirit convicted them of their sins. This is one of the things Jesus told us in John sixteen, that the Holy Spirit would do when He came. I'm quoting, "He will convict the world of sin, of righteousness, and of judgment." John sixteen, verse eight. John sixteen, verse eight. The same people who cried out, "Crucify him, crucify him", were now asking Peter and the other apostles, "What shall we do?" What a transformation! Only the Holy Spirit can achieve such feat. Peter's answer, "Repent, and let every one of you be baptized in the name of Jesus Christ for the remission of sins, and you shall receive the gift of the Holy Spirit." The New Living Translation makes the meaning of repent very clear. It says, "Each of you must turn from your sins and turn to God." Repentance is turning from one's sin and turning to God for the forgiveness of your sins. Baptism identifies us with Christ and with the community of believers. Peter made it clear that the gift of the Holy Spirit was not only for them, but also for their children and even for the Gentiles, that is, as many as will be called by God. And that includes us. On that day, about three thousand souls were added to them. What a bumper harvest of souls! Next week, I'm going to talk about characteristics of the early church. I thought I would be able to do it, cover it in this, during this hour, but I'm leaving it till next week. So next week, we will be doing the characteristics of the early church, Acts two forty to forty-seven, and we will also go on to Acts, chapter three. Let us pray. Father, we are grateful for the way you have spoken to us tonight through your word. Thank you for our salvation and for making your Holy Spirit available to us to carry out the mission you have entrusted into our hands. Help us to be faithful in spreading the gospel to all those who need to hear it. Give us the boldness that we need to tell others about our Lord Jesus Christ. It is in His precious name that we have prayed. Amen. Join us next week when we shall be discussing the early church briefly before going on to Acts, chapter three. Please read Acts two forty to seventy to forty-seven, Acts two forty to forty-seven, and Acts, chapter three. Good night.